...tool lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two A. Replacement pages, Schedule A point one, Schedule A point eleven, and Schedule B point seven. Number three, community presentation. Cheryl?
Good evening, everyone. It is my distinct pleasure to be able to introduce Tali Hankis, who will be introducing Mr. Dennis and other members of the group. And so, Tali, thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Tali Hankis. I'm a parent, a Three Village School District parent. My daughter, Delisa, is a recent graduate. I'm also an artist and board member of Gallery North. And I'm here with a very special gift, two photographs by the photographer Jeremy Dennis, who's here as a guest. And me and a group of parents purchased these photographs as a gift, a donation to the district to be displayed in our schools. Just want to quickly introduce Jeremy. Jeremy Dennis is a contemporary fine art photographer and a tribal member of the Shinakok Indian Nation in Southampton, New York. In his work, he explores indigenous identity, culture, and assimilation. Dennis holds an MFA from Pennsylvania State University, State College PA, and a BA in studio art from Stony Brook University. And he recently had an exhibition at Gallery North that was called Moving Through Land. The exhibition highlighted the artist's use of cinematic imagery and examined indigenous identity within the artist's community, the Shinakok Indian Nation, as well as other parts of Long Island, including the area of Three Village. The two photographs that we chose, one of them is presenting an area near Jolinas School that I'm sure all of you are familiar with, and the other one is a beautiful photographs of the Satakett School where the powwow usually takes place. Quickly, maybe Natalie Anatole, my friend and another Gallery North board member, is going to say a few words, and then maybe Jeremy will say something. Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening. So when Tali mentioned to myself and a group of other parents to purchase these photographs created by Jeremy, I thought, you know, what a wonderful idea. What better way to preserve the oral history from the Settlecott Indian Nation? And my hopes is that when, you know, parents, teachers, staff, and most importantly, when our students walk by these images, that it's going to generate questions and conversations about the rich culture, traditions, and the contributions that this Indian Nation has provided to our community.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'm going to be very brief. I just want to thank you all as part of the Three Village School District. I want to thank Tali, everyone who facilitated purchasing these prints and for accepting these gifts. I also want to acknowledge Helen Sales, who's a Settlecott descendant, for making this history and passing on these oral stories and making that possible. So I'm just so thrilled that this living history, our continued presence, is going to be learned and enjoyed and represented in your school district. So thank you again from the bottom of my heart.
So I just want to thank you for providing these prints for us for the district. And I just want to add one thing, that the Settlecotts are still, as some of you may or may not know, the Settlecotts are still very much alive and well and living in the Christian Avenue community, and there's sort of a diaspora that's spread out to other parts of the island, including Helen and Monique and Hannah and a lot of other members of the tribe. But of note, I think, is that the Irving Hart post, which is very important to the Sales family and others in the community, a renovation has begun of the building, and the roof was just replaced a few days ago, and we're going to start, you know, seeing what community support there will be for gathering together to restore this very, very important structure. So thank you very much, and thanks for your support of that community.
Thank you, Mr. Cornrice. And Tali, Natalie, Jeremy, Delisa, thank you so much. We will hang those portraits with pride, and that is beautiful photography. Thank you for thinking of us, and I'm sure our students for many years to come will appreciate them as much as we do. Thank you, and a very happy holiday to you. We're going to take a picture, if it's okay.
Okay, next on the agenda is number four, reports. Welcome Riley Meckley to provide the student representative report from Ward Melville High School.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to say there is a lot of good news to report for this past month. First things first, we have to acknowledge the incredible musical production of Les Mis. Despite this only being a high school show, I heard many people in the audience claiming, wow, I feel like I am watching Broadway. Personally, I went to see the show closing night, and I could really see all my peers pouring all their energy into these roles. After the show, there were some awards given, and some Ward Melville Theater alumni came and performed a final song with the current cast. Many seniors were tearing up because this was their last show ever for Ward Melville High School. One of the actors told me it was, quote, "a wonderful experience," and everyone truly bonded over the show. Prior to the musical, the cast had a dress rehearsal for senior citizens. Dr. Gold invited local senior center homes to come and watch the cast get ready for opening night. Different clubs served the seniors refreshments prior to the show. The clubs included Students United in Faith, the Muslim Student Association, Hebrew Culture Club, and Diversity Club. And all the members enjoyed making conversations with the local senior citizens. On your desk, you may have seen some red hand sanitizer. Those are what we gave the senior citizens, and they are left over, and the clubs thought it'd be great if I could provide them to you. So that is a little happy holidays gift from all those clubs. On Sunday, Ward Melville students participated in the Electric Light Parade. The student government, Key Club, Bridging Tech Club, and Robotics Club each had members march in the parade. The Robotics Club even decked out a yellow truck in bright lights. It was also nice seeing different junior high and elementary school groups marching, keeping up with our district-wide theme of united in spirit. It is safe to say we were all united under the beautiful lights and the spirit of Christmas and Hanukkah. Many clubs have been focused on fundraising and raising money this month. The National Honor Society is currently having a toy drive for students to donate toys. Student government raised over $1,000 in the Supportive Family Gift Card Drive that the Counseling Center organizes. The Patriot League attended a Pearl Harbor Memorial Ceremony at Port Jeff Harbor. Mr. Cornrice was there, and the speakers provided great speeches with messages about service, sacrifice, and being a hero. I was honored to lay a wreath at the memorial. Before the Thanksgiving break, Key Club members participated in a polar plunge at Cedar Beach. They ran into the freezing cold water to raise awareness and money for the Special Olympics. Finally, winter sports are still operating in the beginning of their seasons. Congratulations to the Ward Melville cheerleading team on qualifying for Nationals this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Okay, next is, we're going to please welcome Erin Connolly and our social worker staff on the SEL update report.
Good evening. Thank you Board of Education and Central Office Administrative Staff for asking us to present this evening on social-emotional learning. I would like to start by introducing our social work team. In our elementary schools, and I'll ask you to please stand, at Arrowhead, Judy Forgione; at Minnesaki, Leah Woodruff; at Mount, Tina Marie Rickmers; at Nasekeg, Christine Scheifel. Ms. Scheifel is also our district lead social worker. At Satakett, Sherri Lennon; and at our shared elementary school social worker, Danielle Wilkinson, who supports Arrowhead, Satakett, and our in-district non-public schools, Laurel Hill and the Stony Brook School. In our secondary schools, at Jolinas, Pam Roberts; at Murphy, Michelle Verga, Ms. Verga was unable to attend this evening; at Ward Melville, Diana Gott; and Lauren Pepe; and our district-wide student assistant social worker, Allison Herschaft. In addition, our sixth grade guidance counselor is here tonight, Sarah Abadi. In the spring of 2020, the district convened the Governance Task Force. I was charged with co-chairing the Mental Health Subcommittee. Our goal was to review the current programming and processes in our buildings and develop additional social-emotional learning supports necessary to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. As a mental health team, we know that comprehensive program development comes from using a multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS. As the team worked to develop the Mental Health SEL Plan during the spring and summer for the 2020-2021 school year, we worked with this model in mind. All students would be receiving Tier One supports. Tier Two supports would be developed and given to students with some risk factors, and Tier Three strategies were delineated to create supports for students with high-risk factors. This team reconvened in the spring of 2021 to continue to review and make adjustments to the plan based on student need. Tonight, the social work team will be reviewing how this plan was implemented in each building and at each level. I would like to introduce Christine Scheifel, our lead district social worker, to review the elementary-level supports.
Good evening. My name is Christine Scheifel. I'm the social worker at Nasekeg and the department lead. With the onset of COVID, we found ourselves in a situation to institute initiatives to meet the changing needs of our students and staff. At the elementary level, we began a social-emotional learning program taught by the mental health staff in each elementary classroom. We also ensured the well-being of our staff by supporting their social-emotional needs in a variety of ways. Programming was provided to our remote students to ensure their social-emotional needs were being monitored and addressed. In addition to these new initiatives, the social workers continued with their leadership roles on the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Committees in each building. These committees work on character education, behavioral strategies, and behavioral expectations for the buildings. Finally, the social workers continued the very important job of providing individual counseling, group counseling, and crisis intervention. The social-emotional learning programs were probably the biggest undertaking initiated since COVID began for our department. The social workers and psychologists collaborated to provide SEL for grades K through five, while sixth grade SEL was managed by the sixth grade guidance counselor, Sarah Abadi this year, and Rebecca Keller last year. The social workers worked hand-in-hand with the psychologists across all five elementary buildings to cull through an existing curriculum and adapt it to our needs. This allowed for consistency district-wide amongst the elementary schools in implementing SEL. The lessons were also differentiated to be sure they were appropriate for all students K through five. Each social worker and psychologist then taught these lessons in the K to five classrooms with the classroom teacher present. The teacher's presence at these lessons allowed the teacher to refer back to our topics as any social or emotional challenges arose throughout their day. All of these lessons are made available to the teachers and students via Google Classrooms for their reference at any time. So far this year, we have worked on topics such as emotions, self-awareness, and respect, and have more topics set to be taught for the rest of the year. Last year, we touched on many topics, including COVID stress, self-management, and social awareness. I should also mention that during the 2020-2021 school year, the mental health teams at each elementary school made videos related to these SEL topics, and the teachers then shared them with their students. These videos and the push-in lessons allowed the social workers and psychologists to become very visible in their buildings, so that when the students had any difficulties, they were already familiar with the mental health staff in their buildings. In addition to ensuring the well-being of our students, we also saw the need to provide support to staff. As we know, if the staff working with our children every day are doing well emotionally, this can only benefit our students. The social workers and psychologists at the elementary level across the district collaborated on providing what we call Happy Mail. Happy Mail consists of surprises left in teachers' mailboxes with encouraging words, uplifting tips, and resources that staff can utilize. Some themes we focus on for staff SEL include self-care, gratitude, and positive affirmations. Here is an example of Happy Mail that we used for the month of December. As you can see, this is a positive affirmation for the holidays. This acted as a reminder for staff to repeat these calming statements and positive thoughts to themselves as coping strategies during the stressful time of year. I now would like to introduce Danielle Wilkinson, who will discuss our remote student supports.
Good evening. For the 2020-2021 school year, Three Village School District was able to offer a fully remote elementary school. To make this year feel as normal as possible, we tried our best to mimic what the in-person students were receiving. With that, I provided 10 SEL lessons weekly with the same topics, lessons provided to the in-person students. I offered weekly breakfast groups for grades K to two to assist with socialization concerns had by parents or teachers. We ate breakfast together, played games, and gave them a chance for the students to interact with one another. I arranged for virtual assemblies and virtual field trips where remote students got to visit with an in-person class. I also provided mandated individual counseling, as well as non-mandated for those in need. To support these remote students with returning to in-person learning, each school social worker and psychologist district-wide offered a summer orientation where students had the opportunity to get inside their designated elementary building. They got the chance to take a tour, meet the support staff, fellow classmates, and discuss any concerns that they may have had. In addition, Parent University ran a program to support parents of returning remote students, which took place in August. In September, each building had a group follow-up checkup with these students. Any students who required any further support were provided with an individual check-in by one of our support staff members. I would now like to introduce Tina Marie Rickmers.
Good evening. As mentioned, the PBIS acronym stands for Positive Behavior Interventions and Support. In each school, the social worker is the chairperson for that building's PBIS committee. With the support of our building administrators, the social workers lead each meeting to collaborate with staff and discuss ideas to promote positive interactions amongst our students within the PBIS model. As Ms. Connolly mentioned, our PBIS elementary school initiatives follow a three-tier model. Some examples of Tier One include building-wide assemblies, which focus on themes surrounding positive character education, building-specific matrices such as Mount Scores or Satakett Rocks, which you can see around the room in this room right now, and other building-wide programs each school has created. Some of our Tier Two interventions include short-term individual and group counseling, daily student check-ins, mentoring groups, and individual positive reinforcement plans. And lastly, our Tier Three interventions are mandated individual and group counseling for students with 504s or IEPs, and creating matrices for students who require additional support from our special education aides or teachers assistants. Unity Day. Unity Day is recognized and celebrated nationally each year in October. This day represents kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. During this event, we are encouraged to wear orange to send a visible message that no child should ever experience bullying. This year, the elementary schools coordinated a full week of activities to celebrate these inclusive themes. We asked that each student place a thumbprint on a collaborative puzzle activity, and each piece of the puzzle was then shared amongst the five elementary schools to be hung in the main lobbies. Of course, this activity was carried through in a safe manner and followed the CDC's Social Distance and Handwashing Guidelines. We also created a Spirit Week highlighting specific themes each day that included a different dress-up day. And additionally, we collaborated with special area teachers to reinforce the message through unified activities in their classrooms. Finally, as a way to connect all five elementary schools, we organized virtual field trips in which classes from different buildings met on a Google Meet to participate in games such as Would You Rather, as a way to come together and unite against bullying. As you can see in this slide, it displays an example of Nasekeg's puzzle activity. Each piece of the puzzle represents one elementary school's thumbprints, and when put together, the project illustrates all five elementary school students' thumbprints. Also highlighted in this slide is a picture of our Unity Week schedule and the activities and themes our students followed each day. I would now like to introduce Pam Roberts, who is representing the junior high schools.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Pam Roberts. I'm from Jolinas, and I'm also representing Michelle Verga from Murphy Junior High School. The junior high school initiatives for 2020 and 2021, and 2021 and 2022 are Remote Transition Support, Social Emotional Learning, Individual Counseling, Group Counseling, Lunch and Learns, Crisis Intervention, Classroom Push-Ins, and PBIS Committees. In the 2020-2021 school year, Murphy and Jolinas collaborated on SEL topics, programming, and implementation. Our topics included gratitude, coping with COVID stress, kindness, and bullying prevention. In this school year for 2021 and 2022, we both did, both schools did a building-wide activity where we introduced the concept of the social footprint. We collaborated with the PE and health teachers, and we pushed into all PE classes. Remote Transition Supports in both junior high schools. We offered a meet-and-greet on August 31st, where we introduced the PPS support staff, and we offered an optional walkthrough before the school year began. We did individual outreach to each student from the PPS staff to all returning students, and we have ongoing contact with guidance counselors and social worker and the psychologist as needed with all students that were remote last year. Unity Days at Junior Highs. Last year for the 2020-2021 school year, Murphy did a Wear and Share activity building-wide, focusing on being kind, accepting, inclusive, and an upstander. At Jolinas, we did a school-wide guided meditation led by our amazing social studies teacher, Christine Chase. She guided all of our students in all of our PE classes in a meditation. This year, both Murphy and Jolinas did the school-wide activity, which is the social footprint. Junior High Counseling. Group Counseling, Tier Two. We have ongoing group counseling on a variety of relevant issues such as social skills, stress management, and peaceful conflict resolution. It's available as needed to all students. We also have Wellness Prevention Services, Tier One, offered to all students during their lunches as an optional activity covering topics such as optimism, gratitude, stress management, healthy lifestyles, grief and loss, and time management, just to name a few. Individual Counseling. Individual counseling sessions are 42 minutes long. They're either on a weekly or bimonthly basis per a student's IEP or a 504 plan. Individual counseling sessions on an as-needed basis for non-mandated students, these students can be identified through our instructional support teams, through guidance counselors, teacher referral, parent request, and self-referral. Referrals to an ongoing collateral contact with community mental health providers as well. Mental Health Safety Assessments. This is a very big part of what we do on a daily basis. There's a lot of crisis intervention. We're always on our toes, and we always have to be flexible. Students in crisis are identified through various sources: self-referral, peer referral, teacher referral, parent contact, and the Go Guardian program. Identified students are immediately seen by the social worker and/or psychologist to conduct an assessment for possible suicide, CPS referral, and/or other safety concerns. We always collaborate with the building crisis team, which is made up of administration, PPS, guidance, security, and the nurse, and to determine an appropriate course of action to ensure safety and provide support. Parent contact is made immediately. Student is closely monitored by the social worker and psychologist and the guidance counselor. Junior High School Class Push-Ins. Tier One. Social workers in both Murphy and Jolinas push into health classes during units that focus on issues related to mental health and wellness. This provides an opportunity for all students to become familiar with the social worker in their building and the support that is available. This has led to an increase in self-referrals by students seeking support. And lastly, the junior high school PBIS committees. We are, as was mentioned before, the social workers chair the building PBIS committees, which serves to promote positive behavior across the school through a variety of activities for students and staff. The committee is comprised of teachers, administrators, and support staff. Examples of things that we're working on are Unity Day, PS I Love You Day, school-wide trivia challenge, which is in the works now, as well as staff appreciation events. Thank you, and I'd like to introduce the high school staff.
Good evening. I'm Lauren Pepe.
I'm Diana Gott.
Hi. So we're excited to share with you the ways in which we are supporting the student body at Ward Melville, as well as students who are identified or self-identify as being in need of increased supports. Our monthly social-emotional learning topics are offered to the entire school, which is an educational and activity-based situation for us. Some of the initiatives that have happened this year and those that are upcoming include Unity Day, which is for anti-bullying, Red Ribbon Week, which is drug and alcohol awareness, our gratitude challenge, school psychology awareness, self-care, PS I Love You Day, which promotes suicide prevention and suicide awareness. Here are some photos of our Unity Day event. The Unity Day event is, the tables are what we were able to host in our common spaces during the lunch periods, as well as a free period for students to come down and participate in filling out a handprint with either their name or a message to promote anti-bullying. PS I Love You Day, these are some of our examples of what we did for that. And then the Red Ribbon Week, that is the display after Dr. Herschaff's sad presentation. So this year, we're excited to have a new SEL space at Ward Melville, which is attached to our library. This space is something that the students actually voted on the name, and they named it the Nook. The space has two parts. One is an instructional part, and one is a lounge. So the lounge is created as a relaxation and a coping skill space for our students to utilize on their free periods. Currently, we're utilizing the instructional space for group counseling, club meetings, staff meetings, lunch and learns with our students, and after-school activities. And it's our goal for staff to start utilizing the instructional space for SEL lessons within their teaching.
Listed are our co-curricular activities that we are running out of the high school.
Listed are our co-curricular activities that we are running out of the high school through the counseling center at Ward Melville. Diana Gott runs and is the advisor for Teen Social. PBIS ambassadors is run by Dr. Herschaff. Students Against Destructive Decisions is also run by Dr. Herschaff and one of our guidance counselors, Michelle Walker. Health and Wellness Club is run by myself, as well as Nina Murphy. In addition to some of the SEL initiatives, our roles and responsibilities also include individual and group counseling for both mandated and non-mandated students. We complete social history assessments and classroom observations to evaluate for students' needs as services for our school. We have five support staff in the Ward Melville Counseling Center. This is two social workers, two psychologists, and our student assistant, social worker. And in addition, we run social skills groups and anxiety management groups, and we also develop groups based on a need for the students in any given year that come up. In regards to our remote transitional supports as another Tier Two intervention, all parents and guardians of students who were fully remote during the academic year of 2020 to 2021 were contacted by our PPS staff of social workers and psychologists at the end of the last school year to offer transitional support in coming back for this academic school year. All students who were remote were invited to come over the summer to the sophomore walk-through, which occurred at Ward Melville, and we were present as social work staff to help orient them. It was an opportunity for them to see their other peers who were also remote, in a sense to let them know that they were not alone, as well as to orient them to where the supports are if they needed it. We had given them a tour over to our counseling center, as well as guidance, so that they were familiar with those supports, and then they had an opportunity to tour the building as well during that walk-through. So, our counseling center is a little bit of a busy place. Just in the first quarter, we had 1,500 sign-ins to the counseling center. So, these 1,500 sign-ins, this included 63 students who received mandated counseling, 120 students who were just seeking support. They were not mandated. They were seeking support by self-referral based on any symptoms of depression, anxiety, stressors to do with academics, peers, or maybe even home situations. And then, in addition, we also had a number of students who required crisis intervention and needed immediate support from the counseling center staff. And of note, I think of those 1,500, those could be students that repeat to come in that same day, so they may have come down one period and then come down multiple times throughout the day. So, I just want to clarify that, too. In the first quarter of the school year, we responded to 12 crisis situations, with an additional eight so far for the second quarter. A total of 20 crises so far this school year. A crisis team is called after one of our social workers or psychologist does a thorough assessment, which will indicate a significant concern of the student's risk for themselves or others. The crisis team is an emergency meeting where the social workers, psychologists, administrators, guidance counselors, and nurses meet to collaboratively discuss and decide upon what appropriate referral would be needed during that crisis. The referrals could be their current mental health provider for an urgent appointment if they're able to be seen urgently. It could be a referral to Family Service League Dash, which is a 24/7 crisis center, a mobile crisis unit referral through Family Service League, or potentially the emergency room for an evaluation. Of the 20 crises so far this year, 16 of those students were in need of being connected urgently to a higher level of care. The last Tier Three support is our PBIS committee, so we know that staff collaboration and unity as a staff with both students and staff allow us to have an opportunity to continue to build positive school culture. So, our PBIS committee works on initiatives throughout the building to continue building and creating new opportunities for a positive culture.
So, we're done to the final portion of the presentation. My name is Allison Herschaff. I serve as the district-wide student assistant social worker. So, why that's a little bit different is I'm a social worker. I'm also a certified alcohol and substance abuse counselor. So, the primary goal of this role is to promote social and emotional competence for students regarding drug and alcohol use, and we work both from the prevention and the intervention model, depending on the student's need and their age. So, in the spring of sixth grade, students first are introduced to me through a peer pressure lesson in the classroom. So, in years past, I've worked with Rebecca Keller. This year, I'll have the opportunity to work with Sarah. And it's the first chance the students have with us to kind of evaluate their own strengths and be introduced to my role as a resource, and the activity really focuses on their own self-assessment of how they respond to peer pressure situations. In both the seventh and eighth grade, I provide push-in lessons with my colleagues in health and family and consumer science. So, for seventh grade, we focus on current drug-related situations that they might come across, whether it's alcohol, vaping, and talk about healthy decision-making. In eighth grade, we focus on healthy relationships and what might be indicators of risks or unhealthy relationships for students. So, in addition to the non-mandated counseling that's provided by my social work and psychology colleagues, I provide counseling to students who are identified as at-risk or perhaps engaging in risky behavior. Obviously, we're probably all aware of the vaping epidemic that has occurred in the last five years, and this is not just at Three Village, but nationally. So, this is often an issue that I'm working with students individually to address their own use or their own concerns at the high school level. So, this is obviously something that we're seeing more at Ward Melville than I'd say, obviously, at the younger grades. Lunch-and-learns are more of a macro-scale intervention that are being offered monthly for any student that's interested in signing up during any of the lunch periods if they're free. The topics this year that we've offered are unity and trust-building, self-care, and gratitude. I am running the anxiety group through the counseling center at Ward Melville, so students that are self-referred or referred by staff are always welcome to join that group. And lastly, the Parent University Series that we began last year is a virtual platform and an opportunity for parents to receive education on a variety of topics that often are ideas that parents have given us. I look for feedback from people and parents in the community about what topics are really interesting and valuable to hear about. So, so far this year, we've addressed executive functioning in two segments, one for K through six and the other for seven through 12, supporting the LGBTQ+ population and how to address appropriate terminology with your students. And in December, at the beginning of this month, we offered a session from the Eating Disorder Collaborative on preventing and identifying eating disorders in adolescents. So, we hope to continue to offer that series. We're going to be scheduling from here on out through the end of the school year. So, I think I'll bring it back to Erin, right? Thank you so much.
So, as you're now aware, our district-wide mental health staff provide a large array of supports at the level for all of our students, staff, and community. I'm extremely proud of the district's social workers. In challenging times, we often ask a tremendous amount from our mental health staff. They become both the rock to support and the soft place to fall for our students and staff. Supporting our school communities through these challenging times, the district mental health teams demonstrated an unyielding work ethic and steadfast commitment to developing comprehensive and creative programming supports for all. I would like to thank the individual building administrative teams for their continuous support. It is also very important that I acknowledge our district psychologists, led by Dawn Mason, and our district guidance staff. Their collaboration, knowledge, and expertise has been integral at each step of this program development. Much of this work was constructed and implemented side-by-side as a team. In addition, I would like to thank our instructional diagnosticians for their assistance at the elementary level. Also, as you heard from our staff, to do this type of effective Tier One programming, we need the support of our classroom teachers, who allow the mental health team to push in to deliver the instruction. A special thank you to the elementary teaching staff, our health and physical education staff, led by Kevin Finerty, Christina Driscoll, and Carrie Kilkeny, as well as our family and consumer science teachers. At one of our department meetings earlier this year, I asked the social work staff, what will the future require from us, and what do we need to do now to be ready? While these are not easy questions to answer, and no one can truly predict the future, I can tell you that this team has the tools to be ready. Thank you very much to all of you for your continued support.
So, Erin, before you go, thank you. So, thank you on--I'm sure all of us are very thankful for all of the emotional support that you provide to our students to allow them to learn. So, thank you very much for that. So, as I'm sure you know, one of our primary responsibilities is in the allocation of resources. So, to that end, what I'm wondering is, and I may not have the language to ask this the right way, but you'll meet me where I'm at, I'm sure, on this. So, I'm not sure what metrics you observe and track, but how would you characterize the kind of collective social and emotional health of the student body, and what broad changes have you seen over the last couple of years? And is there anything that you would ask of us in terms of resources?
Okay, so I think I can touch on a little bit of your question. At the elementary level, we've seen high rises in anxiety in our students. Students who might not necessarily have come to our attention in previous years are now coming to us, and sometimes even in crisis, that we never would have anticipated prior. So, if you picture your highest-functioning students now, who are also really, really struggling. So, that's what I am seeing. I think I would say that it looks like it's across the board at the middle school and the high school also. Did you want to jump in?
I would say, piggyback on that and say that, you know, what we've seen in the guidance office at Jolinas, and I know Murphy as well, is just a lot of peers are reporting their friends, that we're getting a lot of Go Guardians, things that are coming up in different ways, but it's mostly anxiety. We have, I would say, a higher rate of school refusal or school anxiety, kids not being able to come to school, or they come, they go home. I mean, I think it's--there is so much of a need out there, and we can't reach everybody. That's what my concern is. You know, every day is different. We have to be flexible. We have to be--some days, we have to just put everything aside because there are things that come to our attention. I mean, Allison Herschaff and I work together so much more this year than we have in the past. This is your--what year are you? This is your--
Three, four, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we work together at least two days out of every week, and she's only supposed to be at Jolinas one day a week. So, I mean, I rely on her expertise more so than, you know, now than ever. And I also collaborate with the social worker from Murphy more than I did before because we have to, you know, talk about different issues that come up. But anxiety is really--it's very prevalent today.
I think we could also add to that, that our outside provider referrals has diminished tremendously. So, whereas before we had more of a pool to refer families and students to where they could get support outside of school, we're not seeing the resources as readily available as they used to be for a variety of reasons. And remote therapeutic environment is not the same thing for our students and for our staff as an in-person therapeutic environment, so that's definitely been a challenge as well. I will say, though, that this team has been creating a resource manual that we're--it's a manual, but it's electronic, but they've been vetting local mental health providers, interviewing mental health staff, getting feedback from them. They've created documents to get feedback from students on the mental health providers that they see outside of school to allow for us to have a greater repertoire of supports for all of our students to be able to refer to. So, we're working within the capacity that we have. But yes, Jonathan, you're right. The increase, the numbers, the things that they are seeing on an everyday basis is definitely more significant, and that would make sense.
I just wanted to make one comment. First of all, excellent presentation, and I just wanted to say, in all my years in the schools here, 34 years, and all my years working at Murphy and at Jolinas, I have to say, always, I always turn to my support staff for the smallest amount of guidance because so many issues with students, so many issues with parents in our community, and you are always there, and you're still there, and I congratulate you, especially in these times, for the work that you're doing. So, thank you so much for what you're doing for our students, our staff, and our parents in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to also just make a comment to each and every one of you. This Board of Education supports all of our social workers and psychologists, all of us on this Board of Education. Support you. Mental health is paramount, as you obviously agree. We thank you for your services, your events, your activities, your creativity, and taking care of as many students of ours that you possibly can. So, your expertise, compassion, and empathy is extremely appreciated, and don't think for one second, we don't know. Well, we don't know exactly what you go through because we don't do your job. You are the experts. We are not, but we know enough to know. Your work is extremely appreciated, and because our students are extremely important to this Board of Education. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just in conclusion, having worked very closely with the People Personnel Services staff for many years in this district, I have a very special appreciation for all of the work that you do, just as does the Board. And the success of our students academically is not--does not stand alone, that the mental health component is so important that the two together are inextricably linked. So, for our students to be successful academically, they must be healthy in terms of their mental health. And so, all of the work that this group does on a daily basis is critical to that success. And I also want to say that many of us, when we leave our job, we walk out the door. This group, oftentimes, we're calling them on the weekends, late in the evening, on holidays, because we're following up with students that we have concern about, and they are always 100% available and want to be there for the students and the families. So, kudos to all of you, and thank you for being there for our students and our staff and the district in total.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're almost all filled up. We're good, Toni? Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so, item number five, items for board discussion, Budget Advisory Committee, last me-- Last meeting, we announced that we were opening to the residence of Three Village, a resident participation in a budget advisory committee, which will be spearheaded by Jeff Carlson. We opened it up to 12 residents. If we went over 12, we were going to pull names out of a hat tonight, but that didn't happen. So, I'm going to announce all of the residents who put their names in, because they will all be on this committee. We have 10. Number one is Michael Erlich. Number two, Ian Farber. Three, Rianna Fulton. Four, Carmine and Sarah. Five, Christina, Christine Jacovino. Six, Julie Corniffel. Seven, Karen Roughly. Eight, Michael Ruiz. Nine, Sue Walhart. And 10, Judy Wallace. So, Jeff, when's the first meeting, so you can let them know?
January, is it fifth or sixth? I don't have my calendar. It's on the website? Yes.
Okay, so congratulations to all.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I think it's January, oh, hold on, let me check. I'm mixing up, we have different committee meetings.
He's only good at numbers, not dates.
Yeah. Right, that's where the end of something was.
Too many meetings.
Yeah. January 11th, Tuesday, January 11th.
6:00.
Yes. And we'll be alternating meetings between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock, and different nights of the week, all Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
All here, at North County.
All here, probably in this room. And I have some ideas, maybe how it might run, but of course, it's for their benefit, not mine. So, if the committee has a certain way they'd like it to run, and certain pieces, types of information they want, whatever works best for them is going to be fine with us.
Thank you. So, whoever's here in that group, congratulations. And whoever's at home, congratulations as well. The next, there'll be one individual, a high school senior that will be chosen. We have, how many?
We have four.
We have four. Riley, would you come around and pick one? We only have room for one, so that's why there's only one of the four going to be chosen.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I know him.
You probably do.
William Laird. I don't know how to say his last name. Laird, Laird.
Congratulations, William. Excellent. So, we have 10, and one, 11, and then obviously, we have superintendent and our assistant superintendent. Anybody else on? And that's it. So, I guess at the end of all of these meetings, after three months, this committee will be presenting to the Board of Education their findings, their ideas, their suggestions, and so on. Okay, recommendations. Okay, that was fun. We never do anything like that. Okay, so, number six, I want to please call Dr. Baum up for the policy first read, and he will, there are three policies, and he will go through each one of them.
So, the first policy you have before you tonight, 8220 Buildings and Ground Maintenance and Inspection. This policy, as well as the other two policies, were reviewed by the Subcommittee of the Board of Education, and is also vetted by our attorneys as well. This is just bringing 8220 in line with the other two policies that we recently reviewed regarding buildings and grounds and their inspections. In some, it just removes the date in the past. The Board of Education or the district had to conduct inspections as specified by a date that was prescribed in the calendar annually every year. SED removed that date and just said, whatever date the Commissioner of Education or SED establishes from time to time. It also clarifies our practice that visual inspections are done at the request of SED, and a local code enforcement officer must be present, which we have done for eons. That is 8220. The next policy you have before you is 8505, Charging School Meals and Prohibition Against Meal Shaming. This also clarifies our past practice. If you recall recently, or more than recently, over a year or so, a year and a half ago, the state came down with requirements that we are not allowed to publicly shame students if they are arrears or parents are rear in their meal charges. We have never done that, and we never will do that. This clarifies that. This also clarifies the language that only reimbursable meals are available to accrue a balance in a student's account, that if a student or a family is in, has a negative balance, we will discreetly notify the parents of that balance, and we will periodically make outreach to those parents regarding that. Students who can't pay for lunch will never be denied a reimbursable meal, and it also provides that if there is a balance in an account, in other words, a parent has $25, $50 left in their balance, that will roll over to the next school year. If the child graduates, we will make attempts to return the funds to the parents, but after 90 days, the funds will be absorbed by the school lunch program. And that is pretty much it for 8505. And the last policy, 8635. 8635 is really just the exhibit to the policy regarding student data privacy. The previous exhibit was a little confusing. The state recognized that, pulled out information that pertained to third-party contractors, and put that in its own separate exhibit, which really is the agreement that when we utilize third-party vendors, they have to adhere to Education Law 2D, which is right to the obligation of that entity to maintain student privacy. They cannot use, sell the data that they get from us for any marketing purposes or for any financial gain. And those are those three policies.
Thank you. Number seven, policy second read and approval. This is consent. We're going to move A through E together. Can I please have a motion, first and second?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number eight, items for Board action. We're going to move A through D, which are the minutes of August 25th, September 22nd, October 13th, and November 17th. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
You got both, Inger? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. Letter E, bid extension/renewal. Jeff Carlson?
This is an extension of our contract with our cesspool cleaning and tank pumping company. They've done a good job for us, and will be extending it for the 2223 school year.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter F, approve SCPD School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. Jeff Carlson?
This is an agreement with the Suffolk County Police Department to provide us with a school resource officer. The terms and conditions, and the agreement has been reviewed by our attorney and deemed acceptable.
Very important. Okay, thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second? Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. G, approval of contract with outside service provider for special education services. Jeff Carlson?
This contract is to provide certain services as deemed necessary by the Committee on Special Education.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
So, we got Irene and Sue. Okay. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter H, Jeff Carlson, acceptance of donations to the district.
We have, we're very happy to say, we have quite a few donations that we'll be accepting tonight. First is $1,400 donated by the Three Village STEM Enrichment Foundation for the Murphy and Jelenis Science Olympiad Teams. A check for $1,250 donated by the Asian American Association of Greater Stony Brook to support the Jelenis-Murphy and Ward Melville Science Olympiad Teams, that was spearheaded by Dr. Lee. Thank you very much. Donation of $2,125 in Stop &amp; Shop gift cards, along with some individual food baskets for each of our buildings, donated by the Three Village Dads Foundation to help support families in need. $5,500 in gift cards from the Three Village retirees to support families in need. Donation of 20 non-perishable food baskets, along with 20 hams donated by the Port Jefferson Lions Club for families in need. A check for $800, along with $1,275 in various gift cards donated by the Stony Brook Community Church to be used for purchase of holiday gifts for Three Village families in need. $900 in gift cards donated by the Ward Melville Student Government that they raised through a fundraiser to support needy families. A donation of $2,000 in gift cards donated by Mrs. Kia Schwebert to support needy families. And finally, a check in the amount of $8,000 donated to the Ward Melville High School Scholarship Fund. That is from a community resident whose kids had finished with school and wanted to give back to the community, and the donor would like to remain anonymous. So, I don't know if Erin is still here. Mrs. Connolly and the social workers oversee the distribution of all those gift cards, which in itself is very time-consuming, and they do a wonderful job at it. So, it's nice that they were here tonight.
Well, all I can say is wow. Just wow. Right? Absolutely. We live in it, we are blessed to live in the community that we live in. We really, really are. Very proud. Okay, can I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter I, Declaration of Surplus Equipment. Jeff Carlson?
We have some exercise equipment from Murphy's Fitness Center. That equipment is old and not in safe operable condition anymore. Two refrigerators from the Jelenis Family Consumer Science Program, both of them in non-working condition, and a list, you'll see in your backup, of computer equipment, various computer equipment around the district. All of that has been stripped for any usable parts.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Got it? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. J, approval of administrative interns. That would be Kevin Scanlon.
Good evening. We have a number of administrative interns need approval for, just as we do with student teachers on tonight's board meeting.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. K, affiliation agreement with Malloy College. Kevin Scanlon?
We continue to have our affiliation agreements with colleges and universities in the region. This is, continue a clinical program with Malloy College.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. L, Personnel Matters Instructional. Gary DeBruski.
Yes. We have several things on our instructional list here. First and foremost is a retirement for Silver Michelle. She's been an outstanding science teacher for us for years, and we're sad to see her go. We are going to have the resignation, on here is the resignation of two nurses and a part-time teacher. In addition, we have the hiring of two nurses and several sub-teachers. We have, for your vote tonight, junior high school and high school coaches, and we have about 42 people there for additional athletic supervision, pretty busy with athletics. 12 co-curricular activities, stipends for TAs on special assignment, supervision for SAT and ACT prep, and a variety of professional development courses.
Thank you, Gary. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. M, Personal Matters. Non-instructional. Gary DeBruski.
Yes, so for non-instructional, we have several non-instructional resignations, but on top of that, we have additional hiring that we have done, three clerical to replace some retirements, custodians, and then just additional non-instructional subs and co-curricular advisors.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Letter N, Recommendations of Committee on Special.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. O, Recommendations of Committee on Pres-.
So moved.
Yep. Second?
Second.
Okay. Questions? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay. So, I just want to make an announcement before we go further. Thank you. So, we're all very excited about our budget committee with our residents and senior high school student. In addition, that we mentioned, that we spoke about at the last board meeting in November, we have put together and are ready to give some information on the community forum that we spoke about, and that's for residents only, to ask questions, make suggestions, whatever it might be. It will not be a discussion on children, students, or teachers, and that is, we're naming it a community forum. So, this notice is going to be announced and posted on our website on January 3rd. That's when it's going to go up. With the email address and the information, there's also going to be a messenger call sent out to all residents regarding this community forum. So, the special email address that you will be given will close on the evening, midnight of January 10th. Okay? So, it's going to be a window, that it's going to be open to ask you questions, make you suggestions, and so on. It's going to close on January 10th at midnight. Dr. Baum is going to be the moderator. The forum will take place on January 26th at Ward Melville High School at 7:00 PM. There will not be any public participation. The questions are going to be gathered and combined, if there's more than one of the same question, obviously. And the panel is going to answer those questions. So, yes, you can go to Ward Melville High School, but you won't be able to speak. It's just, it's going to be answering the questions that they have received over those, that period of time. It will also be livestreamed, so you can watch it from the comfort of your couch, if you'd like. So, we're very excited about that as well. So, I just wanted to give the final information, look for that information on social media, as well as the website, on January 3rd. So, now, our superintendent would like to make a statement before we go to public participation.
Thank you, Ms. Pofalinka. Before we begin with our public comment period this evening, we would like to address a topic that has been raised over the past several weeks, both during our meetings and through written correspondence to the Board of Education. Members of the community on both sides of the topic have asked for the Board to weigh in and write a letter to political officials regarding the potential COVID-19 vaccine mandate for students. Please know that we hear you and respect the differing beliefs everyone has on this topic, as well as appreciate the information you have brought forward. We know that our residents want to have their voices heard, and we encourage that to happen. Because this is a public health matter, and our work is rooted in education, we have been advised to encourage our residents interested in speaking on the matter to write directly to those in authority, as that will have the greatest impact on this issue. It has been said that the more letters coming directly from families, the greater effect it will have on the state policy and decision-makers. In light of the above, please understand that this is why the district has refrained from writing a letter advocating for either side of the vaccine mandate. Because we are not health experts, choosing to speak out for or against such a mandate would have us writing on behalf of only a portion of our residents, not the entire community, and would further divide us on a decision that is best reached in consultation with a healthcare provider. In closing, please know that we actively support our community's ability to speak In closing, please know that we actively support our community's ability to speak out on behalf of their family's individual views, and we encourage you to make your voices heard in Albany, no matter what side of the issue you stand on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pedicich. Okay. So, we're going to start the clock, it's 8:44, for a first 30-minute session, and first up is Brian Latham. Good evening.
First, I want to say that the SEL-
Please just say your name first.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Latham. I'm a resident of the district. And I want to start by saying that the SEL staff that we have here, I didn't know they were going to be here, they really are wonderful. My family's had amazing interactions with them, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that. They really, they really are tremendous. I also want to thank you for your leadership in these complicated and difficult times, and I appreciate the statement that you just made, Ms. Pedicich, I think that was hopefully clarifying for the community a little bit. I also want to thank you for the Board Budget Committee that's coming up. I think that's an excellent idea that the board has come up with. I think that's a great opportunity for the community to really have a say in what types of decisions the board is making, and I think it was a wise judgment by all of you to kind of do that, so I want to thank you for that, and for the forum that's coming up in January. I know that there are going to be people coming to speak here about mask mandates that we've been dealing with for over a year, and vaccine mandates that don't even exist yet. And I am a government teacher, so I hold public participation in a very high esteem, and I encourage everyone to come and participate in as much as you possibly can with your government. That being said, I just want to echo what Ms. Pedicich said. As a government teacher of over 20 years, I can tell you, this is not the forum. The governor's office is where you should be pushing your concerns, one way or the other. The Health Department, the Education Department, this board in front of you, your elected community members, your neighbors, they really have no say in this, and, you know, I think we should give them some of that respect. I would instead suggest things that we can make changes on here in the community, issues that we can discuss, things like the DEI curriculum that, as a community, we need to find a way to implement. Talking about finding more ways to insert counselors and psychologists on the issues of COVID. Mental health is a problem. I'm a public school teacher, I can tell you. It is absolutely an issue going on in the community. That's something that this board can make a difference on. The bus shortage that's going on in Suffolk County, which is affecting school districts all over the place, is another thing that we could be discussing, that the board could really make a difference on, and it does affect extracurricular activities, it does affect what our children can do on a day-to-day basis. We could, heck, start talking about the budget, you know, I mean, that's something that, again, is something we collectively will be dealing with, possibly bringing back some of the electives that have been lost over the last year. I know that lots of people in this community care and love for their children, and I greatly respect that. I hope that you would give the concern and care to our board members as well, who are doing the best that they can in these trying times, and are also attempting to address the needs of the community. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Jessica Rudin.
Good evening to the board and the Three Village community, what a month it has been, and although, Ms. Pedicich, you just addressed something I'm going to speak about, I'm still going to request a letter to be written. So, as many of you know, myself and the members of the Three Village Parents for Choice have been very busy spreading awareness about the imminent vaccine mandate, which is backed by Assembly Bill Number AA378, which makes the COVID-19 vaccine mandatory for children to attend school. Now that the governor has declared New York in the state of emergency, this bill has potential to pass even faster. Parents at school districts all around New York are attending Board of Education meetings and letting their district know that they are against this mandate for their children, just as we are doing. With me tonight, I have the signatures of 204 residents of Three Village. We are calling upon you to do three things for us. One, send out a letter to every parent and guardian in the district to make them aware of this bill, and to let them know that if it passes and they choose not to vaccinate their child, they will be unenrolled from school and unable to attend completely. They deserve to be informed, and this is your position to let them know. Two, send a letter to Governor Hochul stating there will be, there are many parents in this district who will pull their children from school if this vaccine mandate is implemented. You still can do that. If every Board of Education did that, it would make an impact on the government. And three, provide us with a response for these requests. Please remember, you are in elected positions, and we are the people who put you here. You have a responsibility to do as we request, and with the 204 residents of your district requesting you to do so, there should be no excuses. So, you, how much, okay. I have a question. Why are these vaccines being pushed when they aren't even providing proper protection as we've seen with different variants? Where many cases of Omicron are seen in vaccinated individuals, or with Delta, where regardless of if you're vaccinated or not, you carry the same viral load, which means transition, transmission is the same. Yet our government officials are blaming unvaccinated and creating division of the people when they promise to bring us together. You might say only a few districts out of the 126 on the island have not written a letter, so you're not going to. Why not set an example for other schools? Why not do what your district residents are requesting of you? And how dare you dismiss us when we are working tirelessly to stand up for choice? You might say there are parents in the district that want mandates, so writing a letter would not be fair for them. I ask you, where are their signatures? They're not here. What is here is us, all of us in this room, all of us in this district, and some of us with differing beliefs, but we have one thing in Gottman. We want what is best for our children. Each child is an individual. When a mandate is placed upon a group of people, they are no longer treated as an individual. By doing nothing for us, you are making a choice. Isn't it nice to have that freedom, to be able to say no? Well, if you like having a choice, we implore you to advocate for all of us, vaccinated or unvaccinated. We stand together for freedom of choice. I have a letter for you with all the information, and I've attached-
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Kelly, Kelly, Kelly Sinicola? Oh, district clerk. Yes, please, thank you. Good evening.
Kelly Sinicola, I'm a resident, whoa, that's loud. Is that better? I think Jessica hit the nail on the head there, so, thank you. In addition to that, I really just want to say that the consistency of what you guys are doing here, for example, I had multiple days of interactions with the DOH because I have four children, and everybody had COVID. They have told me that, you have told me that you're following the DOH guidelines, but the DOH says that you guys are making your own rules. So, when a child has COVID, and you quarantine, like, everybody that saw the child in the last 48 hours for 30 seconds, or, you know, 20 minutes, but a teacher who's vaccinated has COVID, and there's not a word about it, it seems to me like there's a push and an agenda targeting our kids, because it's happening way too often, that vaccinated people are able to come into work, and I understand that's also a DOH rule that you're following, but you have the ability to make your own rules, and they're coming in, they're sick, they're leaving, they're sick, and then, you know, it's like, okay, a letter goes out, that people are getting sick, but when a child that's not vaccinated gets sick, everybody is quarantined. That doesn't make sense, because they're not vaccinated. That's what's happening. You can shake your head, but that is exactly what's happening. So, I mean, it feels like you're making an example out of our kids, and why, other than to push a vaccine, like, to force a vaccine on them? If your kid's not, if your, I've heard, if your kid's vaccinated, they, they won't have to quarantine. So, that's a problem. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Ms. Sinicola, I would be happy to speak with you after the board meeting, because I would really like to know who at the DOH that you spoke with, because we have direct contact with the DOH, and I can assure you that Don Mason, who is our DOH liaison, is following that protocol very, very closely. But I would be very happy to speak with you, because I would really like more information. Thank you.
But to your, to your point, though, is that, is that our policy to quarantine based on-
It is, it is not, the district, I just want to clarify, the district is not in a position to quarantine students. We do not quarantine students. That is the Department of Health. We, that, no, that is, I, I'm sorry. The department, what the district does is identify close contacts for the Department of Health. The Department of Health follows up, and they make the decision as to who will be quarantined and who will not be quarantined. The district does not make that decision. They provide the DOH with contact tracing information to facilitate their efforts. But with regard to, if somebody is asymptomatic, and they are fully vaccinated, and they have been identified as a close contact, you are correct, they do not need to isolate, they can return, but if they, they are also encouraged within 72 hours to receive a COVID test, even if they are asymptomatic, if they've been identified as a close contact. Anybody, unfortunately, who is not vaccinated, it is not our rule, and they are identified as a close contact, the Department of Health will quarantine them for 10 days.
What I'm saying is, you are identifying the children as the people that are spreading it as close contacts, but not the teachers.
No, the teachers, actually, the teachers who are considered a close contact, and not all of our teachers, I want to, I want to make it very clear, not all of our staff and beyond the teachers are totally vaccinated. We, we test our, our staff here on a regular basis. Those individuals who are staff members have to be tested. That is a government rule, that is the governor's rules. They are tested weekly to assure that they're not positive. We do get positive cases, they are immediately sent home. But I will honestly tell you that it, in terms of, even if somebody is vaccinated, there have been vaccinated staff who have come down with COVID, and they have close contacts. That is true. So, I'm happy to speak with you further about that.
Thank you. I just added five minutes to the time, okay? All right, next up is Jennifer Midori. Good evening, Jennifer.
Thank you, board. Jennifer Midori, I am a resident here, and I am also fully vaccinated. I was vaccinated here, I was vaccinated here, and this is great. This gets me into all types of great places. I can go to restaurants, I can go to cruises and sports events, because apparently, because I'm vaccinated, I don't pose a threat to others. But then I got COVID last month, so, yeah, I was contagious when I was symptomatic, just as contagious as the person next to me who wasn't vaccinated. So, this is not a ticket by any means to safety, and we would like to think it is, but it's And people in New York, these lawmakers, they want to push this down to our children. How many more spaces do I have to get to be safe? Do I have to go here, here? Do I have to turn the cart around? Do you want to put all these vaccines into our kids? It's not a good idea. This is the biggest medical experiment in the history of mankind, and my kids aren't going to be the next experiment. And I love this district, I love the teachers, and I really, really do appreciate everything the board does, but it's not enough. It's not enough to sit here and say that, let's just put it into the Department of Health's hands. It's somebody else's problem. You're just the educators. It's not enough. We need somebody to stand up. If not you, who? I yield my time.
Thank you. Next up is Sarah Funt. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Funt, and I am a fourth-generation member of this community, and my, I'm a third-generation Three Village graduate, and my children would have been fourth, but they were pulled, I pulled them out of school last year due to masks, all of it. And I just want to say, I heard a lot of talk about history so far today. I heard, I saw photographs of the Settlicot Nation, it's Settlicot, and I also saw a beautiful tribute spoken about to Pearl Harbor. And my mother's a Brookhaven Town historian. I grew up at Satacet School, and knew and understood what every single one of those murals means in the auditorium. I had a fantastic teacher my senior year at high school, who taught an amazing class on the Holocaust, and spoke about his father, and I don't mean to bring up probably the darkest period in our country's, in our world's history, I believe at least, but it wasn't that long ago that there was an elected official in a democracy that took 13 years to slowly send people to concentration camps. And he divided the people, and he divided people based on not only just how they look, but race, religion. He claimed that people carry diseases and ostracize them, ostracize them from society. And if you look at a timeline of that person's reign in history, and you look at what's going on here, we are exponentially faster. And if that's not frightening to people, I'm shocked. Those who don't know their history are doomed to repeat it, and I really hope people wake up. And Cheryl, I do really appreciate what you said before about your stance of not writing a letter, writing a letter, but it is not up to healthcare providers as to what we do with our children. It's not up to the district, it's not up to the government, okay? This is still one nation under God, and we, as parents, get to make those decisions. I don't care what the Department of Health says. If one of us does not want our child vaccinated, then they should not have to be vaccinated. And I will tell you that biologically, moms and dads in the audience, there is nobody more equipped to raise and educate your child than you, and I don't want any of you to doubt yourselves if that opportunity, if that happens to come down the pipeline, and you have to pull your children out of school and homeschool them. You will all do a damn good job, and I don't want anyone to think that they won't. You are-
Mrs. Funt, thank you.
I know, I know that, I know that, and that is what is so scary.
Mrs. Funt, thank you. Your time is up, thank you.
So scary.
So Tara's not here. That was Tara. Okay. Next up, Maria Cavado.
My name is Maria Cavado. My son attends at Minisaki. I know several cases of the vaccinated getting Bell's palsy. I have friends that suffer liver failure due to the first vaccine, and was told by four doctors at her hospital that she should not take the second shot. Four friends and relatives are suffering from severe leg pain, and they are getting shots for pain so that they can walk. Why not, why do I want my child and classmates to be given an experimental drug? Well, I'm going to give you 2,620 reasons why I don't. 2,620 dead babies and bears after COVID shots, more fetal deaths in 11 months than the past 30 years. 30 years. The death count is underreported by Times 41, as per independent scientists' published study. A question, how many of those women will be able to conceive again? Who knows? An investigation has been launched into the spike in deaths among newborn babies in Scotland, as per the Herald. WorldTribune.com, literally criminal, suppressing data on ivermectin costs half a million lives, doctors charge. Outbreaks are surging in mostly heavily jabbed nations. The same can be said in the States here. Ivermectin cures the flu, the COVID also, and it's safe. Some countries are using ivermectin, no more vaccines. India, Japan, Israel, Brazil, some states, the state of Florida also is using ivermectin, and there's no fatalities. Why? And why isn't the mainstream media reporting any of this? Masks are an experimental item. COVID-19 tests are an experimental item. The vaccines are still experimental drugs, and carbonene is not in the United States yet. Regardless of the Vaccinate All Children's Act of 2019, it states, "Could conceivably be used as mandate vaccinations, provided that the authority is not exercised in a way that otherwise violates the Constitution." It does violate the Constitution. It violates the First, Tenth, and the Fourteenth Amendment. Nuremberg Code applies the right to refuse. The government can't dictate, and the school can't mandate to stay in school. Common law, it is the ultimate power of the people, which allows them to consent or not to the actions of their servant government.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Allison Malpin.
So I'm here tonight at a BOE meeting for the first time. I'm here tonight, actually, to do exactly what we were asked not to do. I'm here to implore someone on the board to please stand up for our kids. Please stand up against these medical mandates that are being threatened upon us. Think, even if it's just in this moment, about the freedoms so many fought for so long ago. Reflect on how these freedoms are being taken from us each day. We need to take a stand. We need you, our leaders, our school board, to take a stand and represent us. Our children, they are defenseless in all of this, yet they are the ones that will live their lives dealing with the repercussions. They are who we have to fight for. I would bet, for many of you, when you began your journeys into education, it was based on your love for children. Please, I beg you now, go back to that place in your heart, go back in your mind. Think of these kids and stand up with us against this forced medical tyranny. How, I ask you, can we be made to inject a shot into our children with the chance of so many adverse effects, including death? These adverse effects were known and listed by the FDA as possible effects before they even began these injections. They knew this would happen, approved it anyway, and we are actually seeing them in over 1 million people, but still, we're being asked, actually told, to inject them into our babies, into our future. This is crazy. This is not science. How can we be forced to inject into our children a shot with no science-based research to the outcomes? We are being told to make our children the experiment. This shot has not even proven itself to stop COVID or the spread of COVID. The vaccination population is getting COVID at a higher rate than the unvaccinated and spreading it too, but still, we are being asked to inject this into our children. Why? Who can this make sense to? There are many possible adverse effects of the COVID vaccine, yes, including thousands upon thousands upon death. Did you know that more people have died from this so-called vaccine in the past eight months than all our other vaccines combined in the past 20 years? Think on that for a minute. How is this still even being injected to anyone that is willing, let alone coerced? This is insanity. Please wake up, wake up, and let's fight. Reports of myocarditis and perititis are now well into the thousands in kids, kids that were perfectly healthy before receiving this awful shot. Many now cannot even breathe on their own. They will never resume their active lifestyles. We've ruined them for life. How can we turn our cheek on this? How will you go on, knowing you stayed silent while this was being forced upon innocent little bodies? How can you, when you know their parents want to protect them? How will you be able to sleep at night if you stay silent? If you don't at least try to say, no, no, this is not okay. What I know is I can anymore. It's been years now of them trying to control us with fear, fear that is unwarranted. Many are waking up. Please join us. I beg of you, please do the research, the real research that they won't let you see.
Ms. Halpin, thank you, your time is up.
Thank you. Next up is Adam Demel. Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Adam Demel, I'm a resident of the district. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I was kind of intrigued by the SCI committee. And Mr. Cormice, you asked a great question, and they answered your question, they said anxiety. I think the answer is taking these ridiculous masks off our face, letting our kids see their friends, and not have to pick and choose who they sit next to. Maybe we should let them socialize and be children like we were able to do, and enjoy the fun of being in school and not ruin it on them by locking them down, forcing them to wear masks, not even be able to see who they're speaking to. My kid came home from pre-K the other day, started crying because he didn't share his toys with his brother. I said, how come you're crying? He's like, oh, we're not supposed to share our toys in school. When was that an okay thing to teach kids that they're not supposed to share? They're not supposed to interact. We've taught a generation of kids that the person sitting next to you is a disgusting, vile virus-carrying mutant, and he's going to kill you. That's what you're teaching these kids in these younger ages. You have kids in the high school who are getting yelled at for having their masks below their faces. We were taught that they weren't going to be yelled at, but they walk through the high school and they just keep saying, put your mask on, put your mask on, when we all know as adults, I don't wear this thing outside. I'm not wearing this thing to Target. I'm not wearing this thing to any of those businesses that are mandating it. And you guys could all sit there and, listen, I've given you guys some, some pushback in the last couple meetings, and you guys sit there and you let me talk, but I know for a fact that you guys go out there and you rip these diapers off your face, and you breathe fresh air, but you expect our children to sit there for eight hours and breathe in the same junk that they have. My kids have been battling respiratory viruses because they can't clear it. The doctor, I've had to COVID test my kid more times in the last six weeks than I've had in the last 18 months, because he cannot clear his respiratory virus. The doctors have said, no, he doesn't have COVID, but yet I still have to COVID test my children to put them back into school. It's come to the point now when my kid has, sneezes, I keep him out and say, oh, it's a mental health day, because I don't want to put him through getting a cotton swab jammed up his nose. And I'm sorry, like I said, I wasn't planning on speaking, and I understand you guys don't have any control over this, but you know what goes a long way as a leader? Just standing up and saying something. That's it. We know that you guys can't do anything, we got it, we understand it. We understand that the government is now a bunch of tyrants now, and they're controlling us, we get it. But you know what could really help, is if you guys just stand up and speak words and try to make us believe that we can fight against this and give you guys the power back to make decisions and get everybody in this room the power back to make choices for their children. Thank you.
I have one email. I am writing to implore the Board of Education to stand with me and thousands of other families across Long Island against Bill AA378, which would require school-aged children to receive the COVID vaccination in order to remain in school. Three Village was able to provide uninterrupted instruction last year without a COVID vaccine law. Bay Shore and Connect Quad have already reached out to their communities and to our governor, so I would like to respectfully ask, why is Three Village sitting on the sidelines? I am by no means an anti-vaxxer. I myself received the COVID vaccine. However, when it comes to my children, I have many concerns about long-term side effects and researchers simply cannot provide because it's too new. Coercion is not consent. Many families will have their livelihood at stake if this passes. They will either have to quit their job to homeschool or give their child an injection that they are unsure about. There's nothing about this that's okay, and Three Village needs to help advocate for our kids respectfully. Danielle Algier. Okay, so that concludes our public participation for this evening. Does anybody have any comments? I'd like to just read a few reminders off. The next Board of Ed meeting will be January 12th. The next Policy Committee meeting will be January 27th at 6:00 PM. The Facilities and Audit Committee will be on January 5th at 6:00 and 6:30, respectively. The, we already went over the Budget Advisory Committee, meeting dates and times, and I just want to say that this concludes our last Board of Ed meeting in the year of 2021. In another extraordinary year full of challenges, life still goes on, even through a pandemic. We are grateful for your support. This board and administration will continue their educational commitment and dedication to students and staff. May your holidays be filled with happiness, health, and peace. We wish you a safe and wonderful new year. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Second? You're right. So we're going to adjourn, we are actually going back into executive session to discuss security and a personnel matter. So can I have a motion? Second. Thank you very much.